Welcome to a, welcome to a meeting of the HAM, the Board Selectmen on June 6th, 2022. Please stand up and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and indivisible and just as strong. We are live at the townhouse and the meeting is also being broadcast over Zoom. We are recording the meeting, someone else recording the meeting. Seeing none, we will start. First item on the agenda is minutes, Pam.
Yeah, that's close, but not quite right.
Okay, we have seconds, but no minutes, all right.
Yeah.
All right, so let's timeline for fire chief evaluation and.
Both chiefs have submitted their evaluation forms, self evaluations.
Did members of the board have a chance to review both? What is your pleasure, we want to discuss them now on both of you and move forward. You have any comments?
I have no comments.
I got a couple of questions. We can discuss it, anybody can discuss it.
Nothing right now, I was moving along.
All right, okay. This is for the fire chief. Right, and one of the things you said, Ed, was that the biggest imperative, low attendance of a unique few, at the training, and there's a call.
Yeah.
How many is a unique few, right, and it consists of? Is there a?
Well, I could talk to the town director about it and see what he recommends for that. I think that would come out in that meeting. I do take that into consideration, but I've seen certain people, they say, their own schedule and how these people come in.
Those are HR advice from the top.
Are they just reluctant to come in or are they unable to come in? Or you're not ready to say yet?
And the interest of the fire prevention course. What's the E and D?
I guess you talked about the raising the minimum for call officers. Is that something you're thinking about doing for next fiscal year or you think you're working in the budget?
What I thought I'd do is finish up this this year, kind of the call to where average dial, you know, upon the budget.
Okay.
They would be increasing the firefighter and officer. They haven't seen a raise since 2000. They haven't included any, any, um, top laboring or anything like that. So I thought that was time to maybe, if we could increase that, maybe even price of the others to come along with the DR minimum. Okay, because those are probably obviously will fit for example hours, for seven minutes to 100 two hours in a six minimum. As hard as it is for a call line or CEO call and you left two hours.
What about like medical calls, would that still fall under that?
There was a comment from one of the audience members, they really can't hear you, Ed, back over there.
Yeah, could you come up with one?
Let's have it come up.
Yes.
Can you go over there and say it all again, please, Ed?
So, go back to the call part or? Yeah, so the call, the call, what I, what I wrote down on the evaluation was that the currently, the firefighters make $20 an hour per hour. They haven't seen a raise since 2017. So they weren't included in any cost of living that the town allowed. And I thought by raising them up to the $25 mark, this would help increase some bottom line for some of these firefighters. And then if we increase it to a two hour minimum, any calls obviously in two hours, that they would be a little bit more substantial money to elementize it.
We get them, sure.
Yeah, so these calls where, you know, even though it's maybe burnt food or something, we still have to respond. Or a CEO call at one o'clock in the morning, nobody wants to wake up to, to a tone that comes out or chirping noise that, you know, could possibly be a fault, but you still have to take the time to go.
What's, what do you need for personnel that will disrupt in a situation like that?
Well, we have groups of, you know, five, six people.
Yeah.
Ideally, we'll go with three knowing more are coming.
Yeah.
On the fours are ideal.
When you talk about that rate, compared to other on-call departments, are we competitive, are we way behind?
We're a little behind as far as minimum hour. There's not very many call departments around that I can bounce off of, maybe months that I could check with. But I know their minimum call hours higher than, they have one, it's higher than two hours. And the rate, I'd have to ask what their, their figures.
And you still think we're behind the ball in the rate as well, not just the minimum hours?
I would have to ask, they, they probably break, they have a lot more, they draw a lot more, a bigger population of firefighters and they may have a step in place for the call as well. So I don't want to say a number then, and then be wrong, I don't want to, I wasn't ready for that conversation.
Right, so I'm looking for a little direction here, we got the two, we have the two self-assessments. Obviously, the chief says dictated by his contract, but he's not up for renewal, he gave a contract. Look at the smiling face, it's happy as heck. Can't get down that road again, Tom. And we have Chief Bull and, you know, his contract is up technically for, at the end of this month. We gave him two year, right now, my inclination is to make no change. I'm quite happy with direction of the department, I'm happy with his work, everyone talking to the membership, they're happy as well. I really don't, in my opinion, I don't see any need to change.
Um, I don't see any glaring issues that have come up in last year that have wanted to facilitate a change. You know, it's led by example, tried to get his training up and, you know, as an example, the last fire we had, everything went pretty smooth, so.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm fine, I, I'm fixated now on the, on getting the, doing something with the fire station expansion. You know, just figuring something out.
Yeah.
And I agree, changing chief at the same time would be a total mistake.
Yeah, that, that's where we, that's where we are now, we gotta go back down, so.
The, we could be, I don't know, we're allowed to talk about this and that, but we could reach out to the architect firm that did the Wolverhampton station and see if they're interested in, without taking out a term.
Do you know who that was, Adam?
I do have the company name and number of all.
I think based on the fact that Mitchell stepped away, we do have to throw the net a little wider at this point, so. So I guess I'm looking for the board, are we, at the point we want to offer another two-year appointment period to Chief Bull. So we're.
Second.
All those in favor? So we're appointing a chief to another two-year term through the end of June 2024.
Thank you.
Are you sure you say yes?
Yes.
Exactly.
I said.
Oh, he's got good track, is he?
I, I guess I'm just sort of, in the, the bridging in the article that says they don't, is that, that connected?
Uh, no, that's for certification, so all our officers through the age of eight right now. So currently, all the officers in Massachusetts, need through age, the last thing, age of eight has to be certified. So when the police reform came into effect in 2020, they were given initial year and they actually expire June 30th of this year here, if they don't go through any type of decertification.
So they expire, that means they can't be a police officer?
Correct, unless they've done some type of bridge or it's even for the full-time officers too. There's questionnaire that we have to put out, that's through post commission, that the chiefs have to do an interview with their officers age of eight and, so that's.
But you came a year or so ago and you talked about, you know, the biggest group was the age of eight, then you have potentially in the other two. You had a number, but you had a gut feeling you weren't going to see everybody in that group going forward. So.
What do you think, Mike?
So, so currently, right now, we're going into past July, the July 1st. I'm looking to maybe bridge three, four officers if possible. We had two that didn't last long. And I'll see another three, a bridge for this group after June 30th and maybe one more. If you're ten, four of them. And out of that, there's a good chance that we could take a couple of the officers that bridge into full-time passing because we're going to end around the time, we're learning that I have one officer that's waiting for the time within next year. So if this officer bridges and meets his hours, gets certified by the post commission, become full-time because he's bridged. He will become full-time in the rates as he has been a reserve officer, as we hope to move up the ladder.
That isn't the one you said was retiring, right?
No.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood you.
So hopefully moving forward with the bridging process as we discussed last October, September, October, like the bridge, at least another three, three to four, as long as they're willing to do so, I'm thinking it's going to probably be two to three.
And will they stay on after the bridge?
So they will, they will continue to stay on and as I just said, we could actually have using one or two of them for a full-time opening.
So what's the issue, what's the problem with the certification?
So, so there's a question that's been, that's been put out by post commission and this questionnaire was sat at a, at a panel and currently a lot of concern out there with some of the questions and the question, there's eight questions that are supposed to be asked as an inter, by an interview by the chief of police that's been delegated by the post commission. Post commission isn't established to do all these oral interviews, the law states that there's supposed to be oral interviews. And so they delegated the questionnaires and chiefs of police to do this within the side of the department of all the age ranges. There's a lot of controversy on the questions throughout the time of, unions have actually cited unfairness. Judgment and, they have another meeting tomorrow to discuss the rules of ethics and to push everything through. They, they see it, the law suggests this is the way to do it and that's the way to move forward with it. So the paper is caught wind and, and so.
What happens June 30th, they don't have this.
So they don't have, they don't have a conditional certification if, if in fact something, I, I gotta believe it looks to me from what I'm hearing, it's going to go forward and it's going to be a conditional certification for all officers and post will continue to move forward. I, I don't see if that's stopping.
So now you, you have these three officers or are you retiring or not?
I've given them a copy of the list that you said to me, that's what you asked.
So, so the three officers that are not moving forward.
Right.
One is maxed out for age, that's became bridge, the other two have chosen not to bridge. And they're going to be done being police officers in Massachusetts.
On June 30th?
June 30th, okay.
And then these auxiliary officers.
So the auxiliary officers, two of them maxed out on ages.
Yeah.
And the other two have been offered an opportunity to come back to a reserve officer. Our auxiliary officers can get paid to work shift, they were basically hired to work the details. And so with the police reform coming into place, our department needs to do a shift for coverage for full-time officers and days off and all that. So in talking with two of the members of the auxiliary force, they've already looking probably elsewhere to continue moving on. They are full-time certified, I opened my arms to them coming forward, other working part-time for me. Nothing committed as of this point, so the return program will probably be disbanded for a time.
So we're really going to lose like five, five?
The auxiliary, yes, currently right now, and then we're going to have a nine going into this next year. Out of the nine, you're probably looking maybe three to four, possibly bridging and maybe keeping three to four going through the following year. At the end of my three years, I might end up five or six. That'll be certified, I hope, fingers crossed. This age of eight, you're just kind of, is finishing up and getting certified. There's others in the coming year that might be able to hire, as of our time, it was only certified with everything moving forward, hopefully.
So what are you looking for from us, is there a monetary part here?
So, so right now, moving forward past June 30th, I would ask to use ARPA funds to continue to bridge these officers at about a $7,500 fee per.
Where did the fund come from for the current year?
ARPA.
Yeah, we wrote down that.
We agreed to do ARPA last September. And actually, we did get the reimbursements on that too. They weren't expected to, but there was a $3,000 reimbursement on each officer, I think that to turn it down, probably from the state.
So is there potential for that, we don't know.
No.
Where did that, that kickback go to? Sorry, where did that reimbursement?
Reimbursement came back into the team. So I'm hoping that with these three, that we move forward and that we might have a bridge, will be on a $3,000.
They stayed on running a $75 billion surplus, maybe they will.
Right, right. It was, I can't answer it, and it's still money to extend it, so.
So you're looking at 7,500 per in roughly five or so, five to seven total at the end?
Total of four.
Total of the four. So you're looking at three of us round?
It may be more.
Commit the money on, Bob has, Bob has the equation.
So I have a question, if each department in the state is going to have unbridged officers that they're going to lose, would that mean that there'll be a scramble and competition and hiring away and?
Well, that question before Scotty is, we spend the money on bridging these guys and then they can go somewhere else.
Right.
And we spent the money, we have no. As we spent on it, thank you very much.
Is there an obligation for them to?
Right, as you did say last time, I did go and speak to the individuals, the officers that did bridge. And we had the mutual agreement that obviously you're looking to leave our community after you've bridged. We'd rather have not, but we'd like a reimbursement back for both officers and said yesterday, well, now one of the officers, the two officers that did bridge has a very high potential for a full-time position back in our department in the next year. The other one has, doesn't probably look like he'll want to go full-time, but he can continue to work on a part-time basis for our town because he's going to be certified. I mean, he has no interest of leaving our department.
And with as much skill and work as you have, technically, it's almost full-time at that point.
And, and it's becoming that way, it's actually, we lose more and more of our part-time officers, and he's got to see that, get on that, so.
Just unfortunate, maybe it's not a shift they can depend on, but they're getting 40 hours in.
They could, they could very well, depending on the vacations that come over and all the time off that are full-time officers to get.
All right, but this was only a gentleman's agreement on reimbursement.
Correct, nothing enforceable. Nothing, I look to move, maybe talking to Bob, maybe putting something down and seeing if we can agree with him and have him sign off on it, if that's possible.
Is that, can we do that, though?
I don't have to.
To investigate that?
I'm sure.
We can't be the only people talking about this.
No.
You know, when you said some of the calls and they get, you know, they make a certain grade, then you cover their.
And we can do that, in fact, it's been, it has been done in the past for candidates who are sent to training. And you have to make a commitment to stay with the town after your training is completed for three years or some other number.
So are we committed, are we okay with then dedicating ARPA funds towards the bridging program? Do we have a hard number, I know it's 75 per times four or five over the program length?
The next, the third round.
We'll be commit $37,500 funds to bridge.
Same.
All favor? I'd also like to acknowledge, actually, quite wanting to read them. Acknowledge the service of the following individuals.
Do you want me to pronounce his last names?
Yes, we have a great speaking voice, that's why.
So we have three reserve officers, Mark.
Calarno.
Calarno, who is who wanted to be cutting of the reserve committee, Michael.
Golinsky.
Golinsky and Dave Goodrich, you know, auxiliary officers. Are those going back in, you said, or you're not sure?
So two of them are going to be maxed out for retirement purposes, the other two have not given up at all. They have other jobs, they do, they do, but they would be welcome to come back because they're already certified.
But we're thanking them for that, too, we're thanking them for the resource.
So we'll thank Ram Shares, Brandon Altuero, Anthony Trin, Kees, William Joy, for their service with the HAM, Police Department in town handled.
And if I just add that Mark Calarno, he's retiring as our reserve. Thank the board, please. Okay. We want to, while the chief is here, we want to roll right into Craig's comments on those.
So square resource officer, yeah, so I asked to have this on the agenda because, um, back when we were doing the budgeting, Scott came to us to try to fund a resource officer for, was it two shifts, two four-hour shifts per week? Um, I think each four-hour shift was roughly $10,000, he was looking at the time. And at the time of the budget, we said we're kind of pulled off right now. And then Scott and I were talking last week and I thought it was important to rediscover, re, re, revisit, thank you, revisit this topic to get it going again because I think it's important that we, you know, look out for the schools and fund the resource program. And he's got a very well-trained officer who's been part of that program. So I was thinking, after talking about, we could use ARPA funds to fund the resource officer for next school year. Schools are almost out this year, so it doesn't make sense, but for next school year. And kind of see how the program would go, it was something we wanted to introduce and I thought maybe we could see how it goes with other funds without affecting the tax base. That was my thought, discussions we could have.
Our, okay, no, we have a certain list of what's from the treasury, is that an approved use?
Yeah, Bob says this is, yeah.
Salary?
Not salary, you're funding a program, not a salary.
What else is, the rule is for government services and that's, that's a government service.
So we're not, to say funding a salary of a square resource officer, we're funding a program which would have him backfill hours in the department so they could have a resource officer that would be dedicated to the schools.
Do you have a thought of a definition of what you want this recent, I know you had in the budget, we talked about perhaps having Jason take some of the hours, you know, one of your personals are in there already. But do you have a, a plan for what the SRO would do in?
Well, I think it's all his training guidelines, so.
So the, the school resource officer, if we were to get him in there four hours or eight hours a week, would follow into with the health, health department and come together with any type of training off of health teacher. Who would also coordinate any efforts that are going on, it will be able to keep everything the same, since they have a full-time school resource officer in all their schools. So all that is going on.
That was, that was the question I had, so obviously we have the joint one administrative, they have an SRO at each of the.
No, 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 I'm sorry, we have the joint, we have the joint one, our school resource officer will be able to coordinate.
I believe the German goes to other schools there too, right?
That's the expectation of public issue.
No, he does it currently or no?
Yes.
So Dan also goes into the Warren schools?
Right.
Gosh, between six schools.
Right, and that's the problem because he's a full-time school resource officer, Monday through Friday, when school's in session. So his main office is at the high school and he also filters into some of the trained, where you can in the elementary schools. It works hand in hand with state health department or any type of substance abuse programs or any type of programs that are coming through to educate our, our students and then also the, the leanage on.
The thing I picked up too, when we were at this superintendent screening, we're all superintendents on the Q and A forums. A lot of them had multiple SROs to do different functions. You know, I questioned every one of them when I sat down and asked them about, you know, the program. And some of them are doing mental health programs or interacting with the kids on a daily basis, you know, building the relationship, somebody to talk to, so.
I think it's important that we understand we're not talking about a police officer per se, we're talking a resource person. They'll grab whole police department, but serves men, wears many hats in the school. So I think we're, we're bringing forward that this is an opportunity for.
To build the program, so the way Scott had envisioned it.
Sure.
Wouldn't all those options be to ensure that security measures are in place?
Absolutely.
And that security measures are in force?
We'll do regular training on it, so.
Do we need to get permission with the superintendent of schools?
So we already have gotten permission, he's already signed up for the letter for us for this year's SRO program coming into work. I mean, actually, we are looking for a new, but I did receive a letter approximately two weeks ago from Al that he's on, he was on there last year and he's on again this year as we move forward.
Well, this is more a request, not so much for the SRO, it's for shifting the funding, if you will. You were using a per, a person in your shift to do SRO functions. And you're saying, look, this is important, I have a guy who's going to go in there, he might be on something else and we need to make sure that position is filled by somebody.
Yeah, these will be dedicated hours, whereas the now, they'll be in there, what, maybe 10, 20 minutes during specific times.
Or he might be called in a quarter and might have a detective.
Right, so the officer that we currently have has already been certified, he's already gone through his training, you know, continued his training. So we can put him into the school for the eight hours a week and allow him to just handle stuff, what's going on with the school. And not worry about any type of qualms in the talent, his shift is all covered on, on patrol. So what's your number? We, we talked about for, for an eight-hour, the 20,000?
1982 was the rough estimate for two four-hour shift space. Next school year.
In, in September.
Yeah, there was a, you could have a day on here, it was like 30 weeks, I think you said.
Yeah, that, that was the school year.
Is this an overtime rate or?
Yes, yes. You have to base it off the overtime rate, unfortunately. Now, it could come down off of that, depending, I could actually, depending on the guy. If I, it, it can come off of that. Part-time officer that, as we said, the first right refusal, as we said, goes to the full-time officer at this, at this overtime rate. But I could have, Don, who's working part-time for me now, taken it at a lesser rate.
But isn't that also a part, you said you wanted a trained person there, is every person in your staff trained for this role?
So, no, you know, all these officers aren't going to the school, the officer that's going to the school is at one certified.
Oh, it's the backfill.
This is the backfill, his ship that's going out there, right, this is the back. I can only use that one officer that's been trained already, that was part of the post commission, he had to be trained as a school resource officer and certified. And then the superintendent sign off on it, as you said, which he already agreed that Wolverhampton and HAM.
So this is his worst case backfill.
Correct, worst case, yes.
And just to touch back on superintendent sign off, I did talk to Al Ginnon today and he was in favor of this as well. But I know he's obviously not going to be the continuing superintendent, but.
What you're talking about, is this something where I'm just going to explore from there, other schools? I think there was a component, as Bob alluded to, that is there a safety component as well? But I mean, really can Dan handle six schools?
Currently, currently, he's been doing a great job at it, he's been, he's been working well with the training, absolutely, so.
And I think the thing we discussed earlier was, or the previous time we talked was, this would be jurisdictional, whereas hand in the schools and handling, it would be covered under hand and patrol and the police, whereas if Wolverhampton outside of the regional school, the high school, they would be in charge of backfilling or looking for somebody.
I know, but you're talking, you'd like eight hours at three medals.
Yes.
How does that work out when they have six schools and one guy, how do you get eight hours and he's filled it?
That doesn't matter, it's not.
No, I know that's not our job, I'm wondering, is that something they're looking exploring to? And so they get the same.
I did, I like consistency. Yeah, I'm not 100% sure, I know they were looking to, obviously, Officer Manar is going to be retiring. So they're going to be looking at filling this position and a chance, depending on manpower, maybe someone will be assisted to that officer too. I did hear maybe, but not 100% sure.
I don't know, but considering consistency is really, it's like apples to oranges kind of, because again, it's jurisdictional. You know, they can choose to do what they want in there, you know, lower grade schools, whereas the high school is a joint between the two towns paying for it, so.
No, no, they have personnel move between schools, they're used to seeing the same approach, that's everything. I'd like to, first off, we need to call for another vote to approve the appropriation of ARPA funds for this application. Not the 20,000.
Yeah, it was.
Because it's not.
Yeah, it's up there, it's roughly. Yeah, it's up there, it's roughly.
I'd like to thank Craig for bringing us forward and working with Al, exploring the chief as well.
And I'd like to say thank you very much. Appreciate it. Craig, thank you for bringing it forward.
Thank you, Stepper. Do you want to reset with?
We had a couple of things on the agenda that have been pushed because of a personnel and one man ambulance. Chief, that may be next week if we hear back, so. Especially with the ambulance committee and possible personal information, but just to get a sense of what's going on and what's going on going forward. Bob, do you have anything on the green series?
I did talk again with Mark Robinsky. The head of the program in the valley area, uh, western Masson area, actually. And I posed the question to him. Will the state, uh, agree, will the program agree? To allow. The designated as of right area of town. To be an area where a project is already in place or underway, for example, landfill. And I, I spoke with him last Thursday or Friday. He said, um, I don't know the answer. Write a letter, which I'm on my list to do. I'm going to write a letter formally asking. Uh, the program if that would be, uh, agreeable. And if it is, then that makes it easy. The only other issue that I, perhaps the town would have or the select one would have would be the stretch code.
Which has to actually involve the town meeting anyhow, right?
Yes, correct.
What about the seventy-five hundred dollars from Lower Pioneer Valley that they said they might be able to help us?
They will, they will help us if we agree to go forward. They will help us assemble the information. Uh, that we'll have to provide. They will help us with the language for a bylaw. And they will certainly help us with the setup, uh, for data collection at the big computer system.
So, but that again doesn't obligate, they'll help us assemble, so make a choice.
But, um, there is, um. Uh, some time-consuming effort there, uh, to, to set up the computer system. Uh, to collect the data. The power companies will actually input the data themselves. But, uh, there will be a component of adding data on a monthly basis. By someone like the town administrator, uh, in the town or someone we would designate.
Yeah.
So it's tracking, tracking energy consumption and then you make a commitment. Uh, for which there's no penalty if you don't comply, but you make a commitment to try and reduce. Energy consumption overall in town facilities over five years by twenty percent. So, I mean, I.
I think we should go forward.
I go forward with, I go forward with the letter certainly, asking. Asking if they'll allow that. I told him, you know, we have. We have nine in place, right? You've got a tenth on the drawing board. You know, we probably have per capita more than any in the Commonwealth or in the movement.
In terms of timing then, as you said, it requires town meeting action.
Right.
Now, those are, some things are. Required only annual town meetings, is there something like that? Is this a next year project that's going to be done in the fall?
If we can, we can get town meeting approval at the special, if we.
Is it appropriate to have a bylaw change at the fall time meeting?
Well, if it's a general bylaw change, it can't be done especially.
Not appropriate?
No, it can't be done, but, but our bylaws, yeah.
So it'd have to wait till next year.
Yeah. There's a fair amount of preparation, so.
A general change or is it only?
So, I mean, if you. Yeah, if you want, uh, I can communicate, not only with Robeski, but also with the PVPC. That we'd like their assistance to take the steps that would lead up to the annual town meeting decision.
All right, I still have some concerns, but.
This one we're not. Just kicking the tires.
I mean, in, in one of the, uh. Pieces I read recently, I think it was what Craig sent, a high percentage of the residents of Massachusetts live under. Green community program, something like eighty-eight percent, I think.
There's a, it's quite a number, yeah, there's very few that are not.
Thank you, Bob. You're down to run and talk about the government study committee.
Government study committee, so this is a proposal, uh, to study the structure of the government. I sent John a copy, I sent a copy to the writer and to, because I have him as the person who appoints the committee. Because as you know, the select will be accused of.
Associated with that whatsoever.
So I, the first track, uh, and the other question I have is would we. Know the town meeting and see if they want to, uh, have a study committee? And is there some, coming needs to be some money attached to it, because I think it's a pretty. It might have some. So it might be five thousand dollars or so. I don't know what you think about it, but it's.
Is this halfway to a charter when you talk about this type of appointed thing or you're only talking about appointing basically several?
I think the town, the committee would establish that.
No, no, I, I think we're talking about clerical type or, or like, and again, it goes back to succession. Yeah, you know, we have, we have a great treasurer, we have a great town clerk, we have a good tax collector. But if they retire or god forbid something happens to them. Uh, we have them elected and then it becomes a popular area contest and who on earth did you get? And you want to have some kind of, you know.
Just to clarify what Don said too, though, I think there's no qualms about who's in here now, but everybody's working great. Yeah, and you know, everybody's been doing a great job, this is just succession planning.
Right, well, and, and you know, from a historical standpoint, this has come up before. I mean, not necessarily the, an actual breakdown study of efficiency and. Alternative, the conversation about appointing the, uh, the treasurer, tax collector. Has come, has come up before. And for this very reason, because, you know, as in elected environment, it does tend to become a popularity contest. I guess the saving grace is it seems like so few people run for office anymore. That when you get someone in the, in the role of the treasurer, tax collector. Um, town clerk, I don't think should ever be considered except anything other than elected, although it does require a fair amount of understanding. But the other two positions require a fair amount of training, so I don't think it's off base to do it. And back when I served with your father, John, we did talk about this.
I remember him telling me.
Yep, it was not a protracted conversation and I'm not saying we got very far. But we did have several pro and con discussions about whether or not we want to consider such a thing. Um, and it, it, it didn't rule, but I, we're also suggesting that the environment and landscape have changed. We have excellent people and that's not to say candidates who run will be excellent. But I think we've all come to see, if you look what happened in Easton Meadow, especially with regard to the office of select, we've reached a point where. Superior candidates just weren't coming forward anymore. And then the decision-making really kind of faltered in the last couple of years, enough so that they literally rewrote their whole form of government. I don't, I, I would tell you, John, I think I would be very wary if this started to reach the idea of, you know, town charter. Or changing it, because we are so small.
Right.
That, you know, we're like, literally you're at the last, I mean, I love the former annual town meeting government, obviously, and. Even representative town meeting starts to get away from the, the voice of the people because now they too. But it, it obviously clearly makes sense, you get into a bigger municipality, but not to get off track, but that's been talked about.
But this is no different than the past couple of years and even, um. You know, Dick and Cliff brought it to the board saying, look, if we're off of a protracted time, we have no backup in our department.
Right, this is. If you got hit by a bus.
Bob said, we're fortunate, you look at the Board of Assessors, they have two well-trained staff members. Either one could do the job. So this is just, I don't say it's a good business, but it's really to explore. I wonder though, and look at, I appreciate the work done, it's done, you think the timeframe is a little. Should we tighten up on that?
You mean, make it shorter?
Yeah.
Make it, think they could do it in years?
I think so, I mean, once, because we're not talking a charter. We're talking just, actually, it's a business analysis. And that's what I think it could be.
I think it could be, I think, you know, the, one of the things that I started to think about when I read through it was. You know, the composition of the committee, being clearly you're going to, you want to get as big a cross-section of the committee as we can. But that has its pitfalls too, because some of the, you know, folks who haven't in the past participated in government. Won't really have a true understanding of how it works to begin with. And you can't always see the weaknesses in something or the strengths in something if you don't understand it to begin with. And to the, to the point of your timeframe, I mean, it would almost be that long if you. Depending on how you appoint the committee and what you want in your committee makeup, because you may have to educate some of these folks on how. Functions to begin with.
Right.
So to that end, maybe the longer timeframe is good. If you could find a group of people who came in and, and you, you can, you're going to want a diverse background, some of the business sense. You don't want some of the younger folks because they're going to live whatever we come up for, for some period of time. So, you know, again, if you had seven star wars who understood this process very well. The, you know, a short time window works, but on the, on the flip side of that. It's also, you don't want it to be the same old same walls and everybody looks at it and goes, ah, it's the way it's been for fifty years.
Well, not like we've been inundated by volunteers in the past, or years.
Well, yeah, we haven't, that's, that's a tricky card, but then again, this is the town government and if you look at. You know, some, how some board functions and changes have come out of us in the last couple of years, you might find some diverse interest in doing this. We certainly wouldn't be afraid of it. It's not the first time some of it's come up.
Oh, I think we should set the target closer and look if something happens, we can push it back.
When do you open the start? I mean, I, I see the timeline of what you, I mean, obviously as soon as possible.
If we're talking town meeting twenty twenty-three.
Year.
Yeah, it's a year.
That would work, uh, that would work, uh, pretty well with, uh, the whole effort that updating the master plan as well.
There's no, I mean, there's no reason the two shouldn't be working together. One's going to have to deliver on the other at some point, some point.
In other, in other towns, it's not necessarily. A broad-based overhaul, it's, uh, making minor improvements and changes. From time to time, I mean, some have a bylaw requiring. The establishment of a government study committee every five or ten years to conduct a review and it can be. The whole business of how many elected boards do we want or. Uh, uh, to change the name from Board of Selectment to Select Board, like many towns have done, I mean, small tweaks. Like or something more significant.
Well, and, and that again lends to the conversation that we're having right now, go right to Johnson. I mean, he's not looking at something from his perspective, he's not looking at something that's driving towards a charter change.
No.
I think we, it, it sounds like we agree that we need, there's some things we might be able to improve inside the system as it is. And that goes to what you said, I mean, this clearly does not strike me like an overhaul.
Yeah.
Um, but on the other hand, there's some, there's some reasonable concerns about it, especially when you, when you've got Dick Patello and. And Cliff coming to you, two people have been in the chairs for a long time and are saying, you know, what if we get hit by a bus tomorrow? I think that's actually the best, the best way to phrase it, because they drop out of the game tomorrow.
Let's do this, since we're, I want to say we're kicking this over to the town moderator. Why don't you go back to our meeting next week? Look at the timeframe, look at your, if throwing in, you want to advertise for members. And see if you feel a different timeline is doable. Okay?
Yeah, we can do that.
I think Don has come up with a great little synopsis here, a synopsis, if you will.
And if anybody in the room has some names, I'm easy, pretty easy to find, so just. Open suggestions, I've got a few thoughts in mind.
No, I'll try to keep it at the beach, Rick, I gotta say.
Listen, I schlepped a golf bag on my back eighteen holes yesterday and I'm the one who forgot to wear a hat, so we already know how.
Covered everything. We do have the master plan proposal, however. I would encourage, and the planning board has been kicking this around, they got some. Now that we have them invited to our meeting next week, let's have that general discussion with them as well. When I go back into the eighties, it really did start with planning back then. So I think it's a probably a broader discussion we should have, maybe invite Eva as well. And now we have a couple of votes.
Right. Uh, we have Great Horse Entertainment License for Sunday between twelve PM and eight PM. The live music. And it looks like the police chief. Is in favor. Of granting a license between seven and eight, and is, ends at eight PM and later.
Um, in the interest of, uh, claiming that I am no longer a current member of Great Horse, or I will continue to refuse myself. Oh, look at the full of these guys. Presentation, John. Yes, sir.
So we're in, okay, we're the, uh, Sunday entertainment license for Great Horse?
Yes, as long as it's done by, it had some, uh, concerns previously of, uh, going past. So if we are willing to stop.
Make a motion to approve Great Horse Entertainment License Sunday between twelve PM and eight PM on the dot. There's no date on here.
Twenty twenty-two license.
This will be the twenty twenty-two, so we're going to the end of the year. Got second. Oh, you queued yourself in. And then, um, we also have. Oh, let's see. Uh, permit to operate swimming pool at the Great Horse. Morning tabs. Uh, permit until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And we have.
Is there any other business to come before the board?
I, I passed out the town administrative report, but we've gone over most of it.
I did not see it.
So Blackboard will be operating on the first, we've signed the contract. Police and fire chief self-evaluation forms, um, do we want? How does that end?
I think you just put it in your personnel file and we've, uh.
Okay.
If you can draft up the, the appointment for Ed.
And, and the citizen petition has been sent. To Attorney Timmy for advice, uh, in conjunction with the losses. Uh, scheduled end of year transfers for the twenty-seventh of June, also the annual audit for the twenty-seventh. And the new telephones have arrived, they are here, and they will be installed on the thirteenth. Uh, then you have a list of grants, the only change there is that, uh, the one-stop application has been submitted.
Any select one reports?
I sat in through the superintendent, community sessions and then the superintendent screening at the. School committee, and they seemed to have come to a unanimous consensus on their next candidate offering. Superintendent from North Hampton. Also, he's going to be a good fit, so hopefully they can come to a contract agreement.
Did they talk about a schedule for, uh, their negotiation?
I have not heard about a schedule for negotiations yet. The store has meetings tomorrow night.
Planning Wednesday. A couple of vacation requests, which we've already dealt with. Seeing all the business on his motion to adjourn. I wasn't there. I thank you all for attending.